I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, all. I'm going to call this meeting of the Albany City Council to order, and we are going to move one item right to the start. We're going to adjourn in memory of those lost during Mental Health Month, and we're going to start in honor of those lost during Mental Health Month. Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you very much. I have a prepared statement, so excuse me if it sounds somewhat robotic, but I'd like to state, given that we just honored the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month, I'm encouraged to offer some words of reflection and hope. None of us are insulated from impacts of mental health, whether directly or indirectly. We owe it to ourselves, our community, our family, our friends, to be mindful that mental health conditions happen in many ways. I often forget that not everyone necessarily understands the consequences of unchecked conditions of mental health, whether it be depression, self-harm, post-traumatic stress disorder, anxieties, illnesses that I could take up considerable time listing out. These illnesses and disorders are real. Keeping hope alive when one is struggling is difficult at best, occurring directly and indirectly. I speak these truths from experiences, and I speak the truth as a survivor. The month of May holds significant meaning for me, as it's the birthday month of my best friend and brother Mark. I loved him. However, when he passed away, due to lack of proper resources and access to address his mental health, I was fractured for life, even to this very moment. I struggle to speak his name out loud, but speaking my truth can give others comfort in realizing they are not alone. We are all survivors. I hope by speaking my truth, this can empower others to have the agency and bravery to acknowledge when help is needed for oneself or those close to them. I can state proudly and unashamed that I myself also endure my own struggles, yet I have the privileges of access to therapy and social circles, access that happened because I was privileged enough to earn acceptance into a PhD program at UC Berkeley. Otherwise, I'd be left with county services that have been an unfortunate failure at best, in which oftentimes the struggle of Black, Brown, Asian, and Indigenous folks are trivialized or flat-out dismissed. So as we acknowledge Mental Health Awareness Month, we must also acknowledge the progress that's still needed. We must acknowledge and act upon the needs of our community members, family, neighbors, and friends. We must acknowledge that we all are simply human and sometimes just need a hug or someone to talk with. We must acknowledge and act upon that everyone ought to be entitled to equitable access, treatment, and forms of healing for mental health conditions. But most importantly, we need to take a step back, breathe, check in with ourselves and those around us, and remind each other that help exists, and every day is a new day to find peace. I find that peace in Albany and with my family. I challenge our community to share with others how they respectfully find peace in honor of Mental Health Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you for that statement, and we'll observe a moment of silence. Thank you all. We will now move to our land acknowledgement. Councilmember Jordan, would you please read the land acknowledgement?
Certainly. The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederate villages of the Shawnee. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands, and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this Indigenous people, specifically the Aloneye tribe. We thank them for their contributions, which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home.
Thank you. City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hanson Romero.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mickey.
Here.
And Mayor Tiedemann.
Here.
That brings us to ceremonial matters. First, we will have a proclamation on Immigrant Heritage Month, which will be read by Councilmember Jordan. And to accept, I believe digitally, we will have Josie Halpern-Finerty and Ama Okoto.
Recognition of Immigrant Heritage Month, June 2023, whereas generations of immigrants from every corner of the globe have built our country's economy and created the unique character of our nation, and whereas immigrants have provided the United States with unique social and cultural influence, fundamentally enriching the extraordinary character of our nation, and whereas immigrants have been tireless leaders, not only securing their own rights and access to equal opportunity, but have also campaigned to create a fairer and more just society for all Americans, and whereas despite these countless contributions, the role of immigrants in building and enriching our nation has frequently been overlooked and undervalued throughout our history and continuing to the present day, and whereas the first formal celebration of Immigrant Heritage Month began in 2014, and this June marks the 10th anniversary of the month, now therefore be it proclaimed, the Albany City Council does hereby recognize and designate June 2023 as Immigrant Heritage Month and call upon our community members to honor and learn more about the heritage and contributions of immigrants to the United States. Welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you so much for this proclamation. I am a resident here in Albany. My colleague Ama was not able to join us tonight, but we are both with an organization, a nonprofit organization called Forward.us, and Immigrant Heritage Month is part of an ongoing effort to empower immigrants and allies to share stories and drive action that demonstrates that immigration is good for our communities, economy, and country. I just really appreciate the City of Albany taking part and joining folks like the White House, who I think their proclamation went out yesterday. So really, thank you all for joining in this effort this year.
Thank you for your work, and thank you for being here.
Are there any councilmembers who wish to say anything on this item? Are any members of the public wishing to speak?
No.
Great. That brings us to our second ceremonial matter, which is our recognition of our Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT graduation. And I believe I'm giving these awards to someone from the Fire Department to give out.
Vice Mayor, Council. Just a chance for the Fire Department to thank those who just completed the Spring of 2023 CERT class. It's a lot of work for a amazingly important program. Just this January, when we had the big storms, just a small example, seems small, it's a lot of work then, we asked, we reached out to Albany CERT Incorporated, and they put the word out that we needed help making sure all of the gutters and storm drain areas were clear of leaves. Who knows what types of problems would have happened, but they took care, we didn't have a single issue with storm drains due to all the rain. As a matter of fact, we had one CERT member who had a pickup truck full of leaves and debris that they had helped collect from all those that were clearing drains and brought it down to the corp yard for the city to, you know, compost and such. So the little small things that lead that first domino, it stopped a big problem from happening. So that part was amazing. I'd like to acknowledge Engineer Mike Robb. He's our CERT manager. He runs the class. And I believe, Mike, if you want to say a few words, and I think you have a quick video that explains and shows what went on this spring?
Yes.
All right. Very good.
Thank you, Chief Boydo. Our CERT program, I've been running for probably about, I think it started in the early 90s, and it's kind of took a little break during COVID, unfortunately, but we came back a little bit stronger after that. So thank you, Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor, for giving us the time to recognize our students and hopefully promote CERT for other people out in Albany and the surrounding area who would like to learn more and be a help to their community directly. And we have a little short video, if that's okay, to show what CERT is, what we're about, and what the class of 2023 did.
Great, thanks. So here's Chief Boydo to hand out the certificates to our Spring 2023 class. Thank you.
All right. One of the important pieces is, after we give the certs out, we're also going to swear in our volunteers as disaster service workers.
David Bonnisk.
Joel Godelsleeve.
Lee Pham.
Jack Rolls.
And Sarah Hinckley.
All right. Our CERT members seem to be disaster service workers or trained volunteers who are available to aid in the response and recovery phases of a disaster. They enable our first responders and other city departments to respond to many more calls for service in a time of great need. I want to thank you all now and then into the future for your service on calls and when we need you. So thanks again. And we'll have Hansu give the oath or affirmation to you.
You want us in the line in front?
I heard there were 10 of you, 10 in the class, is that correct?
There were 14 in the class.
Okay.
Four people did 95% of work and have to take the final in the poll. They're very committed.
Very good.
Four people were traveling for work, and one is teaching a ballet class at the community center.
Oh, nice. All right, there we go. Thank you for representing.
Do you guys want to turn around and make a 180, face the front, and if you need to?
Oh, I see. Got to be able to read this screen.
Okay. Thank you all for your volunteer effort, so please raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I instate your name.
I, Susan Yane.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
that I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
against all enemies, foreign and domestic
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
to the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
that I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
and that I will well and faithfully discharge
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
You may lower your hands now. Thank you.
Thank you all. Are there any councilmembers who'd like to speak on this? I have not.
Just say something really quick. I think that this is a really great and important program, and hi, Coach Joel. My daughter had him, a great Zoom teacher for PE. But anyway, I really love to see and am encouraged to see the volunteers, you know, join together, go through this training. I grew up as a Girl Scout, and we did a lot of similar training in that as well. So I, you know, commend you guys for being part of this and hope that we won't need you that often. But when we do, thank you for being there, and thank you for taking the training and all you do. Thank you.
Yes, thank you all for taking the training. It really does benefit us all. Are there any public comments on this item? All right, then please enjoy your cake. Thank you. That brings us to the City Manager's report. City Manager, could you please have your report?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. We'll be bringing another slide up to the screen because a picture is worth 1,000 words here. This was included in our e-news recently as well. But really, while we have some of the staff in the room, the just amazing work that our Public Works Department continues to carry forward with regard to how they execute projects that are quite complicated and And that includes the recent pavement rehabilitation of Marin Avenue, a section of Marin Avenue. It was successfully completed over just a handful of hours over the course of a weekend. It was a full street closure. So again, we thank everyone for their patience and support during those disruptions, but really hope that folks are enjoying the nice, smooth roadway, regardless of what you're traveling on. And we will continue moving forward with these improvements, including the striping. So this is a great slideshow that's, again, also included in our e-news that can take you through all of the steps of the project. And there you have it. And as a reminder on our website, when we are under construction with a project, we have a Construction Alerts tab that you can go to, which is updated actively during all projects. A little bit more information on Marin Avenue. Thank you to anyone that may have made connections with East Bay Mud. We are delighted to hear that the area above where the construction occurred, the city construction occurred, where East Bay Mud did some trench restoration work, they anticipate initiating the repavement of that area as of June 26. So that is very welcome news for the users of Marin Avenue. And we will continue to share information as it becomes available from East Bay Mud and their contractors. While our fire chief isn't in the room, I wanted to recognize him and the efforts of his department, as well as our Neighborhood Services Department, for an evacuation drill that was held this past weekend at Gateview Condominiums. This is an annual event where our departments attend and help our community members, especially in the high-rise condominiums, understand safety awareness and the uniqueness of their facilities and how to prepare in the event of a disaster. Great, well-attended event. We may have image of that, the disaster preparedness drill. No, okay. Moving right along. Reminder that this celebration this weekend, Sunday, June 18th, from 10 to 5 on Masonic Avenue, is Albany Juneteenth Celebration. This is an annual event that the city sponsors, and this year is led through Abrams Clayhorn Gallery, who is doing a phenomenal job in planning a very exciting and impactful event. So please take some time to attend that in connection with the Strollish Summer Event, which will be held on the same day and on the same avenue. So please take the time to enjoy both and the interconnectedness of those two important community events. You will see we have the Pride Month flag up here at City Hall, as well as our other public facilities in recognition and honor of Pride Month. We also have information on our website, as displayed here, going into the importance of the month and the recognition thereof. A reminder that the Street Tree Management Plan Community Survey is up and running. This is a great opportunity to provide thoughts, feelings, sentiment regarding street trees and how they further themselves within the City of Albany to further build our community and also maintain health and safety for our residents. Please check this link on our website. It's a survey monkey, pretty straightforward, doesn't take too long. It will remain open through June 30. So you still have a little bit more time to do that. This is one of many opportunities to get involved in the project and planning. But please take advantage of this as it'll help shape the project going forward. Another fun event that is well-loved by the community is now ready for registration. While it feels like August may be a long time from now, it certainly is not, if anyone knows how quickly time flies over the summer. So please take some time to register for National Night Out for block parties. Hopefully, we'll break our record and have even more block parties this year. It seems that this is a very popular event. It will be held on August 1st and is a great opportunity to get to know your neighbors as folks transition on blocks and also visit from city staff and public safety staff who attend each block party and just say hello. So the registration is on our website, very simple form to fill out. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that report. Do any members of council have any questions? Are there any members of public? Okay, go ahead.
I would just like to add my thanks to Public Works. That was amazing to get that all done on one weekend. And I'll just emphasize for the public that I think it was 3,000 tons, approximately, of material was taken away and then delivered in, I don't know, 36 hours, something like that. So it's an amazing logistical challenge. So thank you very much for getting that done.
Yes, I'll echo that sentiment. It was impressive and is now lovely and smooth. With that, that brings us to Good of the City. If anyone would like to address items not on the agenda, now is the time to do so, which you can do by pressing the Raise Hand button or star nine if you're on the phone. And this and all other comments, please address the City Council, as we do not want to make any other commenters feel uncomfortable. City Clerk, any public commentators?
Peter?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening. I just, I'm Peter Goodman, and I'm an Albany citizen. I just want to draw your attention to the sad and shabby state of a couple empty buildings on the corner of Solano Carmel. That's the 1400 block, which is basically, I think, it's the northeast side of the street. These buildings have been vacant for a couple years, and they are in terrible condition. They were vandalized recently, and one of the doors was crushed in, and it's just in a very sorry state of repair. The other building, when it was first vacant, it had clean cardboard or, you know, paper sheets in the windows, but those have all fallen down. The windows gotten all graffitied up. The building itself has been graffitied, although that was recently painted over. And I don't blame the, well, I guess I do hold the building, property owners responsible. I understand they're in a difficult position with no income coming in. But these are really an eyesore, and I think they very much detract from the pleasant commercial environment that we want Solano to have. I don't think it costs a lot of money for them to be repaired and kept looking reasonably decent. I understand they're vacant, so there are some problems with that. But certainly, the property owners could do more than what they're doing. I don't know what the, I don't know to what extent the city has any legal ability to compel them to do better, but certainly, people from the city or from the Salon Chamber of Commerce or Solano Evanus Association could possibly meet with the owners and suggest ways that they could improve the look of the buildings and hopefully improve them. And I pointed out these two buildings because they seem particularly bad examples of neglect, but there are buildings up and down Solano that are either in a slightly better state or they're going to be heading into a much poorer state. And I'd like to say to be more proactive and make sure that the buildings look good and that the commercial environment is pleasing to everyone who is there. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. Dr. Stephen Albert. I'm actually a Berkeley resident. I'm calling to bring to your attention the unsecured power lines side of 1600 Solano Avenue and wondering why these not been attended to for now 41 days. A truck inadvertently took down the overhead power lines on April 16th, I'm sorry, April 26th, whereas the neighboring buildings promptly secured their power lines properly to code to the side of the building. The Caspores have been allowed to leave their property at 1600 Solano Avenue unattended and, again, in improper condition.
Thank you for your comment. Any more? I believe on the one we just received, City Manager, we have communicated to the property owners in that instance that those lines need to be fixed. And I also believe they're not active power lines or something like that?
We're looking into that through community development, and our inspector will be actively monitoring that. And we are engaged with the property owner on some complaints we've received from that individual. With regard to the other question, as I understand it, those properties are actually under construction, major improvements for new tenants. So I will check in terms of the appearance of the outer buildings in connection with our economic development staff to make sure that the owners are aware of that concern.
Great. Thank you very much. That brings us to our consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered routine by the City Council and be enacted by one motion unless otherwise specified. And there will be no further discussion on these items unless they're pulled for further discussion by a council member or a member of the public. Are there any members of council who would like to pull an item for further discussion? Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on a specific item on our consent calendar? Seeing none, I will look for a motion.
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Been motioned and seconded. City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to our presentation, which is on the contract with the County of Alameda for additional library services.
Yes, good evening, Council. Mayor Tiedemann. So this item is the adoption of Resolution 2023-42, authorizing the City Manager to enter into an agreement with the County of Alameda for additional library services for the next fiscal year in the amount of 725,440. And this is for, to cover the additional hours that the library provide and that the city pays through two special taxes that were approved by voters. And so we also, under financial consideration, we, the tax that we currently collect will cover the additional hours of library services that we contract with Alameda County. And also, we have staff from the Alameda County Library here to provide some information on the services provided and also on the contract.
Good evening. My name's Rachel Scher. I'm the manager of the Albany Library. Darshan, did you want to present first, or should I? Okay. Darshan is going to present the financials first.
Good evening. My name is Darshan Chata, and I'm finance manager at Alameda County Library. So Alameda County Library has a contract with the City of Albany for providing additional hours. Like, with the property tax that we get, we could only provide like 15 hours, 15.5, and the city wanted four hours library to be open. And then they went to the public for those special parcel taxes so that they collect. And so we have a contract with like $725,000, I guess. And this contract has been going on for a couple of years. And so we are not increasing this contract amount. Like, last year, I think last year I was here, and the question was, why is the same amount? Because this is not coming from a general fund. This is coming from the special parcel tax, and that stays in there. So as much as we use, rest stays in there. And then we can use that for a rainy day. Right now, we are in a good position as far as property tax is concerned. But I don't know in future, like, there might be recession and property tax might go down, and then we might need more money from the city for these services. Plus, we also generate available fund balance. Like, we, library is a special assessment district, so we are not part of general fund. So whatever is left at the end of the year, that goes into the reserve that we have. We call it available fund balance. So if you look at the contract, so we are using like a million dollars from that available fund balance to fund the total functioning of this library. So right now, this is the situation. So we are in a safe situation right now, so that we are not increasing the contract amount and anything like that. But you guys have any question on that? Like, so this is an ongoing contract. Every year is renewed automatically, not automatically, but you guys renew it every year, and year-to-year basis. So that's pretty much about this contract. Any question?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to now present a short presentation of some highlights from the year and an overview of what we've been up to and what we're planning. Oh, thank you. So I just put on here just a recap of our mission for Alameda County Library and our vision statement. Our mission is we grow learners, break barriers, and build futures. And our vision is kind, connected humans. So comparison to last year's report on the left, during the City Council report last year, I gave the statistics that are on the left column here. And as you can see, we're in the first quarter of the year, so I only measured the first quarter. But there's been an increase in materials borrowed, use inside the library, so our PC sessions, Wi-Fi connections. We're circulating more materials. That's similar to what we were doing. We didn't have really a break in service during the pandemic. We've been providing service the whole way through, even though we did limit our hours. And there was a period we were closed, but we were still providing online programs and circulating materials with our no-holds pickup service in the beginning of the pandemic. So that's why the holds haven't really changed that much. But as you can see, we've doubled our visitors. We're now having a lot more in-person programs. We were restricted until March of this year by the limitations of the space we have in the library. And we were still masking and social distancing. We no longer require masking. And so we were able to open our program room back up. And of course, people can still mask. It wasn't, but the social distancing element really limited us to outdoor programs and off-site programs. Online programs now, we're back to holding programs onsite. Our regular recurring programs, as well as special events and programs. We can go to the next slide. So we've had some, I forgot to ask Steve today. Steve Wasserman is one of our longtime library clerks, and he recently celebrated a milestone work anniversary. I don't want to misquote the number of years, though, but it is quite a lot. So I wanted to give a shout out to him, but I forgot to check in with him today to ask how many years it has been. And we did say farewell to one of our other library clerks, but we've welcomed two new library clerks, so we gained one. And they're doing great. So if you are familiar with the library and library staff, please introduce yourselves, or even if you're not, please come in and introduce yourselves. or even if you're not, please come in and introduce yourselves. It's always good to meet members of the community and City Council. So we've recently done a lot with our collection development. We're always looking at collection development. In fact, we have a whole centralized team in Fremont that looks at our collection and does acquisitions. But recently, we had a very extensive report that was done measuring the size of different areas of our collection, to how well it's circulating and shelving space. It was very detailed, really informative, and it helped inform a lot of decisions about shifting the collection. So that's why if you've been in the library, you might have seen those green signs and that image on the right of the screen that we're shifting things around. So it might not be where it used to be. An example below that image is of where we've moved our new children's books. So before, we had them on a wall that was a little bit, not as, it was browsable, there was room to look at it, but it wasn't as visible. And so now it's really centrally located and a lot more browsable and highlighted. So we think that will circulate better. I also added an image of our zine collection because it's close to my heart and very special for our branch because we're, I think, the first branch that has a zine collection in our Alameda County Library system. It's not circulating yet, but we hope to. And there's now three branches that have zine collections. So hopefully, we'll work together to figure out a way to circulate those. There are some challenges with that. And that collection is growing. So our library technician, Amber, has been really taken charge of that collection, and she's been going to lots of zine fairs and events and acquiring new zines for that collection. And we have a lot of new community language materials. So an example of making just that more apparent to the public is we've brought some new Chinese large type materials and put them out on a cart so they're really right front and center. And we're going to make a regular display of our community languages, just to show people that we have a lot of new community language materials. We also, some, I think it was some Girl Scouts approached, I forgot what branch, I think it was the, our central branch in Fremont, about doing a survey of our communities for all of the county on what languages they like to see in the libraries and what languages they're using and their familiarity with knowing if we even have those language materials. So whatever the results are from that will also inform decisions going forward. We also have a new romance collection. We always collected romance, but now we have an area of the library just dedicated to that collection and hardcovers. So, and on the left at the bottom of the screen, this is something that we put up last year, our parenting collection. So there's topics parents might be interested in, or families, not just parents, and any caretakers might be interested in that are maybe a little more difficult to talk about, and they're all kind of all in one place, easy to find. And I just put up some slides of just some of the many highlights from our programs and events. So we have a few images from our recent, we participated in the community expo, and we were able to, since we have our program room back, we were able to set up the entire room with some activities, some craft activities, as well as we've had books that we gave away because it fell this year and last year on Dia de los Libros, which is a day when libraries, bookstores give out books, especially to children, with a focus on community languages and making materials accessible. And we did a little craft that was related to that on the bottom left. We've been having some fun with community displays and interactive displays, and we put up the Cal Falcons webcam in the lobby, and so that was a big draw. If anyone doesn't know what that is, Cal Falcons are in the, I forgot what that building's called, but there's a building on the Berkeley campus, and some falcons have nested there and they come back every year and they have had babies. So, and we have a strong partnership with our, with the Albany Film Festival, so we renewed that partnership. And we had our first in-person events this year. We screened the best of the fest for two nights. And we also brought back a popular film and that we've had before. We've had lots of films, we're having more films. Next week, we have a film, Wigstock, with, through Albany Film Fest, I believe that we partnered with them on that for Pride Month. And then below, you'll see that the City of Albany, all the different departments have been really generous with sharing their space when we did not have a space to hold programs in. And so that event on the bottom right there is an event that we held for United Against Hate Week at the Senior Center. And we showed a film, we had the filmmaker there, one of the people from the film, and former council member Peggy McQuade was also a speaker for that film. And we've also been focusing on, we've always focused on creativity, but I've asked the staff to really challenge themselves to think about sustainability when we're designing our programs. So we've had a lot of programs where we're reusing materials, really thinking about the materials that we're using in the library, not just for program, creating materials, but also even what we serve our refreshments on. Do we buy bottled water and waste all that plastic? Or do we have a pitcher of water, that kind of thing? So we had some printmaking workshops, and these workshops, all of the creative workshops that we've had draw a huge range of ages, which is really fun to see so many, such a big age range participating. We had a book folding program. We've had origami programs where people are turning their recycled junk mail and materials into beautiful origami. And then we've brought back our, for children's programs, we're bringing back more soon, actually, next week, we bring back our new, it's two weeks, I apologize. We're bringing back our Baby Bounce that we used to have. It's a storytime just for babies and their caregivers. We also brought back our toddler storytime in person. We were doing an online program, but now it's in person again. It's really fun to see so many children back in the library. And we do an after-school program called Make and Play Lab that will be on hiatus during the summer, since there's no school, but we'll still be doing lots of special events, which I'll talk about later in this presentation. We've had a lot of class visits. It feels like every week. I mean, it's stopped now that summer has started, but it's great. We've been able to get a lot of elementary school students and actually, I think every middle school student signed up for library cards, shown them around the library, helped them find materials. We, of course, have special craft programs as well and author visits. We recently had an author visit. Some of these photos are, the one on the right, the far right, is from last year's summer programming, and we're going to have a similar program. I just love that picture, so I included it. And we got a puppet theater, which was the best hundred-dollar decision I've ever made. That has been a huge draw for children of all ages. I was actually surprised at the older age of some kids that are participating, and it's just so much fun. You can go to the next slide. And then, of course, we also have a lot of teen activities. We have some new teen activities. So we have a Dungeons and Dragons group that meets every week. That's them on the bottom right. They turn the lights off and put on some, those aren't real candles, those are the battery-operated candles. And we have special events. We had our youth poet, Alameda County has a youth poet laureate program. It's fairly new. It started during the pandemic and, or maybe it started right before. I think it started during the pandemic, but we were able to have them in person this year. And we also had our poet, former poet laureates from Albany read with them. As I said, we've visited the, instead of having them come to us, it was easier for us to go to the middle school. We did that last year as well, to help with the iSearch project and also to get all the students' library cards. And we have a teen advisory group. They're a great group of kids. We're kind of thinking of shifting that to just a teen hangout because they work hard enough. We don't want to make them come to the library and work some more. So we have volunteer, teen volunteers that can fill that role if they want to work, but really, they just want a place to hang out. So we're going to have a sort of transition that group to time when they can just come to the library, hang out in the program room without anyone else other than the teen librarian, and eat snacks and have fun, and we'll have crafts and special activities for them as well. And we've really, I think, upped our game. The whole county library system has upped our game with celebrating diversity. So including our regular displays, excuse me, that we have for heritage months and special programs, we've also been doing these great book giveaways. So just providing books, it feels like it's every month we have, we have books to give away, and there's no strings attached. People can just walk away with a book. We have that cart on the right in the photo is of our pride giveaway that we have right now, so people can come take a free book home. And for Asian American Pacific Islander Month, we had book giveaways and kits. We've, we had kits for Mental Health Awareness Month, which was at the same time. We, it's just an endless supply of kits and books and things you can take out of the library. So your learning and enrichment doesn't have to be within the library walls. And the, sorry, the image on the bottom there was that author visit. We had a book called This Is Not My Home. A local author spoke and shared her story of immigration. And then summer's coming. We have, most of the children's activities are on these two flyers that are on this display, but we actually have a lot more activities than is just posted here. If you want to participate in the summer adventure program, we call it summer adventure because it's not just about reading. Of course, we want to encourage people to read, but there's other ways to get involved, especially for pre-readers or people with learning differences. So if you go to that link there or on our website, you can find all about how you can participate in summer reading, I mean, summer adventure, which is already underway. It started earlier this year. We recognize that some districts in some cities start earlier than others, so it's a much longer summer adventure season. And then I've listed some of our children's activities that we have, but like I said, we're going to have lots of activities for all ages. We have a bike repair event coming again. We had them last year, an amazing turnout. That's going to be on June 22nd. We have a reptile show in the park in Albany, which we did last year. It was a, that was a great event to have off-site. It was really fun, and we were able to fit a lot more people. We have a nature wild show. We have lots of movies. At least, I think, once a week, we have movies for different ages. So we have, like I said, Wigstock coming next week. We have a Black Panther movie. I forgot the exact date on that. And we have, I spoke about this last year, but we're really close now. I didn't have a date last year, but sometime, by the time it gets to our branch, it will probably be the fall, but they're starting to convert our other branches, you know, we're doing one at a time, to RFID technology, and that will really improve the efficiency and the experience of being at the library. We also are planning to bring back Albany Reads, which is a program that actually existed before I came on board in Albany, but I've heard amazing things about it, and I'm really excited that we're going to bring that back. I'll have more info on that soon. I don't want to speak about it too much because we haven't worked out all the details, but that will happen in the fall. We've been bringing back a lot of, we've been bringing a lot of events about mental health and physical health, especially for seniors, not just for seniors, but we recently had a death doula and a funeral director come and speak with us in a small group conversation about death and dying. And we used to have something called the Brown Bag Program, and that phrase is problematic. I don't know if anyone knows about the Brown Bag Test. So we're renaming that Lunch and Learn, and we're planning to bring that back. That was a partnership with the YMCA. And so we will have special speakers come in on all different topics and speak to the community about whatever their specialty is. So we have art. We were talking about having someone from a recycling center, just a big range of discussion topics. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you very much for that presentation. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, are there any public comments? We'll bring it back to council for comments, for comments from council.
I will just thank Branch Manager Scher for taking me through the library. Most amazing thing that stuck in my mind was a laptop vending machine, essentially, so people can check out a laptop with their library card for use in the library. So thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you.
Thank you as well for the presentation, for taking us through all those great services. I don't know if you can give a better pitch to local government by outlining all of those services and also caveatting it with the price isn't going up, it's paid for by a special tax. tax, and we don't have to staff it. So all of that is amazing, and it shows that you are doing a lot of amazing work that really benefits our community in a lot of different ways. So thank you very much.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council?
I had a quick question. What is baby bounce?
Baby bounce is, it's like a lapset. It's like a baby storytime. So babies can't read stories yet. And it's, the caregiver will take the baby with them to the storytime and bounce them on their lap for songs. And there's a lot of finger play and, and stories too. They do read stories, but yeah, there's a lot of active.
Thank you. You might see my chief of staff come around very soon.
If there are no other comments from council, then I'll look for...
I was just going to say, I truly appreciate that you all are being conscious about the funds and the fact that you are saving for a rainy day fund, and applaud you for all the efforts in terms of senior health and wellness. I appreciate the renaming of Brown Bag Lunches to Lunch and Learns. This is something that, I did not understand the history or know the history of the Brown Bag and what that meant. I know something our office, a few years ago, went through in renaming our own Brown Bag Lunches to Lunch and Learns. And so I appreciate the efforts that you are putting into making sure that the library system and the Albany library in particular is as inclusive as possible.
Thank you. I only recently learned that as well, so I'm happy to rename it. And I should, speaking of funding, I should give a quick shout out to our friends of the library group because they do also support us. And they actually, even during the road closure, they had their big book sale and they still raised over $4,000, so. Okay, thank you.
Unless there are any other comments, I will look for a motion.
I want to come play with the puppet show. But I'll make a motion to...
Approve Resolution 2023-42?
Yes, exactly what I was going to say.
I second.
In motion and seconded, so quickly, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mickey.
Yes.
Mayor Tiedemann.
Yes.
And Councilmember Hanson Romero.
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you. This brings us to our public hearing, which will be on our biannual budget for fiscal years 2023, '24, and 2024, '25.
Okay. So the entire budget package is a lot of things, and there are actually two public hearings involved. So we have our master fee schedule update that requires a public hearing with notice, and we have our appropriations, or also known as the GAN limit, update, which also requires a public hearing with notice. So those two items are why this is listed under the public hearing. The master fee schedule has already come. There were a handful of small changes between what you saw on the 15th, and now, most of them are very technical, nothing, you know, mind-blowing in how we're changing the fees. It's the same, we're updating by CPI. And then for the appropriations limit, that was not included in your prior packet, but it is included here. Basically, the appropriations limit restricts what local government can appropriate from what is considered proceeds of tax. And there's a wonderfully complex Excel spreadsheet that we put a bunch of numbers into, and it changes by two factors. Factor A is either the change in city or county population, and factor B is either the state per capita income or the non-residential assessed value change. Now, the three numbers besides the assessed value change are all given to us by the state, so they may not match the census or other things. There is a letter that comes from the state that says, use these numbers. So the appropriations limit is audited by our auditors every year, or the change in the appropriations limit is. So the factor that we came up with this year was 3.95, and it is explained in detail in your budget package. So those are the two public hearing items. And then, other than that, you have the budget package. There were a handful of changes from what we presented in May. The first was, in my wonderful state of having a new baby, I forgot what our storm drains needed to be budgeted for. So we added back in storm drain. For the most part, that is funded by fees and special taxes, so it only increased the appropriation by the general fund very slightly. It was by like $50,000 or something. And then we also added in the funding for the two cert classes, and so that was about $5,000. And so the change was the deficit increased from, or the budgeted deficit was projected to increase from 1.25 million to 1.3. The other change was we added the special revenue parcel tax rates in. They are all suggested to increase by the maximum rate as set by law because CPI was higher than that. The only one, we are suggesting that the library taxes do not change. We have a fund balance in there. The current amount collected covers what you, what we pay. It'll eat into fund balance a slight amount, but it's a fairly large fund balance because during the pandemic, when they weren't open to the public, they only charged us half of the contract rate, and so our fund balance grew fairly significantly. So we don't, it's not an issue if we're eating into that fund balance for a few years. So we are not suggesting that those rates update. We are suggesting that you approve the increase of what is considered the maximum rate. For all of the parcel taxes, the council can set the rates lower than the maximum rate, but if you do not, you still set a maximum rate, which is either the lower of CPI or whatever each individual tax says because they're all different. And then the sewer fees are also in here. We are asking to put them back on, you know, the tax bills. There is no change in the rate until the last sewer fee study suggested a CPI increase through last year, and now we are at that one rate until we do another sewer fee study, which will be coming to you at some point, soonish. And then, other than that, we just wanted to reiterate what is, you know, what comes next. You know, we do have this budgeted deficit. What do we do with this? As per the information in the end of the budget package, I, while we are budgeting a deficit, the budget is presented as a, these are the resources that we need at full staff and all of those things. That doesn't necessarily actually happen. And so the cash flow projection indicates that a deficit won't likely happen until, I think it's '25, '26, that fiscal year. A lot of things happen between now and then. We look for additional revenue. We, I do generally come back to you every quarter to show you, you know, an update of where we are and give you updates on, you know, just other finance-related items. In general, if we need to, we bring budget updates at mid-year and then at the, the start of the second year of the biennial budget. So if we do need to update it for any reason, we can do it at that time. So, did you have anything else? All right.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, is there anyone on the line for public comment?
No.
I just want to make sure, this is Julia Frank, I just want to make sure, speaking during the appropriate item, is this for the biennial budget? And I know that there was a staff report, so I just want to make sure I'm not...
Yes, this is the biennial budget.
Okay, so the staff report has already, you know, there was a mention of Music in the Park, so I just want to make sure I'm addressing the right item, during the right item.
Yes, I think this is the right item.
Great. So thank you, council and city manager, for all the work you've done for this biennial report. I do have one question. I just read the staff report, and it appeared that the Music in the Park evening events have been proposed as an addition, which we really appreciate, but for one event this fall and then two events in 2024. That's a clarifying question, and my comment will, will relate to the answer to that question. So if I could get my time paused and then get the answer and then continue if that, if you don't mind.
Is it possible to do your comment all as one? We try and do the comments and then...
Okay. So if it was a proposal for just one Music in the Park fall event rather than two, which, you know, as part of a citizen committee trying to sort of reignite it, and we had even offered to do the actual work to put it on as a two, as a series of two consecutive events, the Wednesdays in the fall, I would strongly urge the city council to please put it back to the two. We really appreciate that the staff is willing to take this on and budget for it, but we really do feel like the actual Music in the Park events, having two events really builds community. And I think although, you know, this is huge budget for the city and very necessary infrastructure projects, as you all know, I think the community really only sees certain things as the city providing certain services. And I, and I feel that the loss of Music in the Park can, that community members can really feel like it's a sense of loss for the services that they get provided from the city. It's such a beloved event, and, you know, after so many years of not having community, not obviously just through the absence of the Music in the Park events, but also a lot of other in-person school events, we need to rebuild our community. And this is just such a lovely event to have in, you know, a space where we're outside and there's no, you know, threat of COVID outbreak, that we, I really urge you to please re-institute the two events for this year and then go back to the four events in 2024. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
My name is Greg Bone, and I'm a retired police officer with the City of Albany. I worked for some 29 years. I sent you a piece of correspondence, I think, is attached to your packet. I hope it makes good reading for you. I have some concerns. Obviously, I've been following the Financial Advisory Committee meetings for about the past two years and have participated in those meetings, and I've provided what I hope is some assistance in six pieces of correspondence to that committee and a few insightful pension-related articles that I thought might be useful for them. I won't go over what I have in the letter. It's rather lengthy, but I hope it's something you can read and appreciate. I did have a thought that might be helpful. It seems to me it might be very helpful if the FAC, the Financial Advisory Committee, could liaison with city staff to actually find out what new revenue sources are being explored and how viable they are, and when they would come online. As you know, and as the FAC has reported to you just on the 15th of last month, there's a huge divergence between, on revenue trends and expense trends going into the future. We've also got the Bartell and Associates 10-year UAL funding payment schedule, and it's quite, quite extreme. I think it goes up to 5.3 million end of 2032. And that, from my understanding, doesn't even account for the pension payments for existing employees. I feel rather a need to advocate for past employees, past retirees such as myself, and current city employees. We want to make sure that proper decisions are made, that the city is in good fiscal condition to meet the pension obligations that are due all these employees in the future. It's, the numbers are a bit scary. I think that you need to stay on top of them. I think you are, but the numbers are so large, they can really turn really bad for you. And I just have you look to Oakland to see what's happening over there. That's not the look we want here. I have a little bit of time left. I want to commend you for your appointments to the FAC. I, I think they're absolutely high-quality individuals, are smart, talented, and they are very dedicated. I know they take their job seriously, so I think you made some excellent choices. I hope you take their advice seriously. I think you do, and thank you for the time tonight.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, thank you so much. This is Bonnie Davidson. And so I was, just wanted to echo a little bit of what Julia Chang-Frank said earlier in that we are really appreciative that the city is considering bringing back the Music in the Park and sponsoring that, and the community is here and happy to help with it as well. I think, having looked at similar things in the Albany Unified Budget, we are all facing these sort of daunting futures, but cutting community-facing events is really challenging for keeping your community sort of behind other things and projects and feeling united and together. So it would be really helpful to maybe see how other neighboring cities are handling things like this. You know, I just saw one, a new little neighborhood in Oakland where it's a specific group that's helping to put it on, and then the city is maybe sponsoring part of it. So maybe we can look at some alternatives, but I think that it would be really helpful to have the city sort of bridge this year while we figure out what else we're doing to keep these community events coming back post-COVID. And I also think it's important that we not just put it all on sort of community volunteers, where we do have some wonderful events sort of blossoming, but I would worry that they would disappear if one person decides to stop running them, and that would be really, really a bummer if we didn't have some of these things. So thank you all, and I wanted to just also second the FAC, seeing sort of the other revenue streams that the city is looking at. We just faced that with our Budget Advisory Committee. It became challenging for us to look at the budget and, and think about making cuts of a large enough scale to actually offset what was potentially happening. And so really investigating other revenue streams became an important component of that, and so I think that that would be really interesting to see from the city as well. Thank you so much for all you're all doing.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, Albany City Council. My name is Dan Bear. I'm an Albany resident, and I'm also a member of the Music in the Park Citizen Committee. Following on what Julia Chang-Frank and Bonnie Davidson said, we're asking for formal approval for two weekday evening Music in the Park events. The dates we're hoping for in Memorial Park would be August 26th and September 6th, both Wednesdays this, this year, 2023. We're also asking for money for the budget to support the two events and for staff, both to help publicize the event and to turn on the electricity for sound and lighting. And we have plenty other people involved. Eugenie Shu, who is a major force behind Albany Moving Groove, she very much wants to lend all of her experience to help, to help make it happen. Becca Bl... much wants to lend all of her experience to help, to help make it happen. Becca Black as well. So we've all been meeting and communicating for months now to make this happen. And as Julia and Bonnie stated, it is really a valuable and cherished event, and it's going on two decades as a tradition. And we all know so many things have been obliterated by the pandemic, and this is one of those things that we do not want to lose. So if we could have it happen twice this fall, and hopefully begin happening four consecutive weekday nights starting 2024, that would be awesome. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Aaron Frank. I just want to echo what Dan and Bonnie and Julia just said about Music in the Park. There are not many ways that we congregate as community anymore, and I know that a lot of cities will try to put on events to try to get people involved, and it's very hard to do. And we actually had something that was successful, that people loved and participated in as a tradition. And those aren't, you don't turn off the hose and turn it back on real easily. People still remember it, but we don't want to lose that tradition. So I would echo that I'm having two, two nights this year, and hopefully getting back to the tradition. Something really important for this community. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. All right, we'll bring it back to council for discussion. And I'll say briefly, I thank you to all the commenters and who put in a lot of work getting together the proposal for Music in the Park. It is very good to see people who really want to see this type of event come back and have, you know, put in work and are willing to do volunteer hours to make it happen. I think, well, I'll just say, I would love to see that happen. I, and I also appreciate staff's quick action of, we got the email about this six days ago or something, which was either the day or day before the agenda was going to come out, asking for inclusion on this agenda, which I thought, well, there's no way we can do that. It's very quick. But it did make its way into the staff report, which I appreciate. But not to cheapen that, I would love for us to discuss this proposal, and having these event, and how to fund it, and what level and how many to have as its own agenda item at some point in the near future. As, you know, we have a proposal that deserves some attention, we also have estimates from staff about what it would cost, what would be involved in that. We have a request to make it even more than is presented, which I think deserves some discussion, and we have to figure out what that would cost and what resources it would take. And I think that would, we can, I think we can fit that in before this would happen, hopefully, and, you know, discuss what it would entail as its own budget, as its own item, as otherwise we could go down a rabbit hole here. We should really talk about the budget as a whole. I'd also note that because we have put so many of the other events that we often fund in the actual biannual budget, which I really appreciate, we have some more flexibility. We usually use our council discretionary funds to fund some of those events to some extent, either Solano Stroll events, or Film Fest, or other things. Now that we've budgeted for those in the actual budget, we do have those funds, and so if we wanted to appropriate any of those to support this event, I think that it could be a good use of them at some point in the future. But would any other council members like to speak on these items?
I would echo your comments, Aaron, sorry, Mayor. And again, appreciate all the efforts the community has made. I agree with the comment that these kinds of events are the kind of events where the tradition of, once you lose the event, it is often hard to bring them back in the way that they were. And so, much in the way we as a council worked to find additional funding to help make sure that Solano Stroll would happen, that we dedicate the time to truly have a conversation about this, and ask, how can we allocate the funds that we have as a discretionary fund in supporting to make sure that this is an event that can be successfully pulled off with both volunteers and the city staff? And so I would love to see us have two events in the evenings, but I also recognize that this is something that we will need to have deeper discussions about, and we will need to understand that if we're funding this, what, what aren't we funding through our discretionary funds? Or additional funds that we might be able to shake loose from the budget? My understanding, and I'm going to look at staff at this point, is that the budget is, is we are setting, but it is a living document, and it is something that we, as a council, can choose to make adjustments as, as we see fit. And so I appreciate all the input today, and I am in favor of multiple events, but I believe that we need to have a discussion about, about how we successfully pull off these events. Because much like the efforts that were put for Solano Stroll, that was seen as funding to make sure that Solano Stroll continues, and so as Solano Stroll got its feet back under it, it would require less of the city. And I would like us to be able to work with the community to find a way in which the Music in the Park can be something that is less dependent on city funds, but that's not something that's going to happen overnight. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you to staff for bringing this in so quickly. I guess a question on the idea of having a separate agenda item is, I mean, the desired first event of these events is not that long away, for somebody who deals with logistics sometimes, nothing like what Public Works deals with. But so I'm amenable to the idea that this, this needs a more in-depth focused discussion, but I don't know if that delay is going to actually make things more complicated rather than less complicated, should the council choose to go forward with it.
Sure, thank you for the question. It's an important question to note. For the current year, we're talking a handful of months until these events are typically held, or at least were held in the past. That simply is not enough time to plan for two evening events and secure the bands, the professional level of bands we would need, as well as retain all the equipment associated with those events, including lighting and securing those agreements. Our staff took the time to commit to one event in the effort to try and find some compromise. And I need to say that they moved quite a few mountains to make that happen. So I just wanted to recognize that's what you have written in the staff report, because, excuse me, that's what's realistic for us to accomplish in the current year. Moving forward, because we saw the interest in two events, you have a suggestion for two events, and that also allows for a variety of events, including daytime events. If we were to transition back to four events, we would need a different budget number, and perhaps that's where the discussion comes in, but it also requires resources beyond just the funds to retain the event. And that's where staffing concerns would come in.
So to the, to the timing issue, is your preference for a decision tonight regarding one event this year? Or? I know.
Let's see, for one event this year, yes, we would need the, if the council's voting on one event this year, we would absolutely need the $68,000 for the lighting to transition. We, it's complicated. We currently have, within your operating budget as proposed, three music events in the park. And one of those would transition into an evening event, potentially, but we would need the lighting cost to facilitate that, which is at $68,000. We've also included in the budget for two events for the following fiscal year, which would be the full event as an evening event.
So just to clarify, I think the staff report says $38,400 rather than $68,000?
Right, two events.
Is two, two events is?
$6,800, sorry, $6,800 for the lighting for this year, and then the remainder for the next.
I was about to freak out.
Those are really expensive events. That's right, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Okay, so the, the lighting part of it is $6,800?
Yes, $6,800.
And is the $38,400, is that for one event this year, or is that for all three events?
Yes, it's for two full events, as well as the lighting for, just the lighting for this year. The lighting is?
Okay, so it's for a daytime event this year, a night event this year? I don't, I'm not, maybe you walk me through it.
Sure.
Sorry.
Currently in the budget, we have three music events in the park. One is Fourth of July, the next is a daytime event in August, and another one in September, I believe. All three are daytime events. Staff went back in, hearing that there was an interest in having an evening event, to see what we could accommodate. And so one of those events, the furthest one out, so we have enough time to plan it, different type of band, a lot of different situations, would be an evening event. So the only addition we would need to the budget is $6,800 for that event.
I see, okay.
For the lighting.
Okay. So where does the $38,400 come in? That's for the?
So for the other two events, full events, evening events.
Oh, you mean in the following year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So the total is spread across the two fiscal years.
Okay, that's very helpful to know, thank you.
And if we are to extend beyond that proposal, we would also be talking staffing. And so that's what isn't included in this figure, because that expands the program beyond what we're able to facilitate with our current resources.
My recollection is, which may well be faulty, is that the genesis of this event was when Target came to town. I believe Target sponsored Music in the Park. This was, I don't know, whatever that is, 14 years ago, 13 years ago. So it was sponsored for some time period. I don't know when that, thank you for confirming, historian, to my right. I don't know when that sponsoring ended, and it continued on, on the city's budget.
Yeah, I would need to research that. It's also important, important, important to underscore the transition that that department has undergone. It is not a recreation department. It's a Recreation and Community Services, Human Services Department. And based on policy direction set by the council, going back to our Social and Economic Justice Commission, human services were incredibly, and continue in expanding, need for the city. And so a lot of our staff in that department, day to day, hour to hour, minute to minute, are serving some of our most vulnerable in the community. Now that same person has an evening event, it's a domino. And while we would love to accommodate all the interests, it's a core services question.
I don't know if staff has spoken with this sort of nascent volunteer group. I know that can be complicated engaging volunteers.
We sure have, yeah.
Okay.
Our staff has met with them at least twice to help understand the interests and look for opportunities to partner.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Those are my questions. Well, again, I think I'm hearing the desire would be, at least, and maybe we can, maybe this is a way to parse it, is take action on the appropriation that would be for the event just this year, tonight, potentially, so that staff has clarity, given how soon it is, and then delay the appropriation, the conversation around that to a future agenda item.
That is what I was going to suggest as well. If I'm hearing it correctly, that that would basically mean tonight, we would commit that $6,800 for lighting and adapting our previously budgeted for slash scheduled event, and then discuss the other two at a later time, slash maybe more than the other two.
Great. I have comments on other, I want to thank former chief Bone for paying such close attention, bringing your, your experience and your wisdom to the, to the effort. Something you don't have to do, so I certainly appreciate it. And I want to thank staff for the, I don't know, 50, 100 questions I asked. I definitely dove into it more deeply this year than I did two years ago. So I just want to acknowledge that.
Any other comments from council?
I guess I'll just recognize that we are potentially, depending on what actually the council takes, looking at raising the expense side of the budget 12%, and the revenue side 18%. I appreciate the staff has been conservative on the revenue projections, particularly during the pandemic, and is sort of coming back to more of a set point pre-pandemic with this revenue projection, which is part of why I think it's so large. You know, I really, as I said, asked lots and lots of questions, trying to understand this increase. And from my layperson perspective, I understand it, I've come to understand it kind of in three different buckets. So there's the bucket of just the cost of living increases, which, I don't know, in my simplistic mind, I put it as about a third. There's a bucket that's for increasing the number of positions. So there's an increase of four positions. Now, three of those are funded by Measure K, the passage of Measure K, and that's new revenue. And then another third approximately is for bringing various positions to market rate, as well as step increases. And so I think it's the combination of all those. We haven't had increases like this in quite a while. I look back through budgets. I don't expect to have them again. I think it's sort of a unique set of circumstances at this moment. And I know that the city managers mentioned that we will be having a revenue, facilitated revenue discussion period with our consultants in that regard, so I look forward to that. There was an idea that came forward in the last council session that, that I think we learned a lot from interaction with stakeholders around that, and I think there's a viable way there, so I look forward to that.
If there are no other comments, I'll look for a motion.
It's a big motion, as I recall.
Yes, I assume we can move all of these as one motion?
You can move a staff recommendation.
Okay. I will move the staff recommendation, which is to, to pass resolutions, 2023-30 through 2023-37.
And to clarify, do we need to amend those to include the?
You need to, yes, I'm talking. Okay, you need to amend number 37 to include the $6,800.
And with, with the inclusion of a $6,800 additional appropriation in the biennial budget for fiscal year, specifically 2023, 2024, for accommodating a Music in the Park event at night.
I'll, I'll second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. City clerk, can we please call the roll?
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
And Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Heather, once again, especially for doing this when you have a new baby, which is especially impressive. That ends our public hearing on this item, and brings us to our new business, which is an update to the guidelines for restricting street parking near intersections. Can we please have staff's report?
Good evening, council. I only have one resolution for you tonight. Justin Fried, Transportation and Sustainability Manager. Next slide, please. So before you tonight is consideration of updating current city policy regarding red curb, restricting parking at intersections, also known as day current city policy regarding red curb restricting parking at intersections, also known as daylighting. This is a safety measure for increasing intersection visibility, primarily for pedestrians at crossings. It is not just a pedestrian safety measure, it benefits cyclist and motor vehicle visibility, and it also improves emergency vehicle access, facilitating turning movements in residential intersections. Typical national guidance is twenty to twenty-five feet of red curb at marked crossings or unmarked crossings. Next slide, please. Other red curb applications at intersections are related to infrastructure access and are implemented under city engineer authority, including storm drain access and other parking regulations, such as no parking near hydrants. Next slide, please. Current guidance was set in twenty seventeen. It includes guidance distinguishing the approach and departure sides of the intersection, identifying preferred distances of twenty and ten feet respectively, with flexibility to reduce further if determined to accommodate a vehicle parking space and to increase further if the remaining curb length to a driveway does not accommodate a vehicle parking space. The greater length of parking restriction on the approach side in the city's policy addresses the increased vulnerability there due to the generally closer proximity of an approaching vehicle to the crosswalk approach from that direction. The policy also includes that intersections with geometry, topography, or other constraints are to be analyzed individually for visibility treatments. I'll just note here also that there is a state bill under consideration, AB four thirteen, that would restrict stopping within twenty feet as part of the vehicle code. So there's a chance that, that city guidance gets superseded, but that is still just a proposed bill. Next slide, please. The current policy also details a process. It provides prioritization criteria for where to start the implementation. It states that proposals for each intersection are to be reviewed by the commission at a meeting, notice to owners and occupants within a hundred and fifty feet walking distance. And then after that, the city engineer makes the final determination and implementation proceeds. Next slide. So implementation to date has been accomplished in one of two ways. One, through city projects that involve engineered plans, where we detail on the plans, the proposed red curb as part of engine development of the plans and bringing those to the Transportation Commission. The other method is through standalone implementation, following the established prioritization I just described. These standalone projects have involved preparation of visuals to communicate the proposed change and time to review and discuss at commission meetings. Residents generally have an expectation when they receive notice and attend the meetings that the proposal is flexible and can be approved or denied. However, over this time, the commission has consistently upheld the guidelines prioritization of pedestrian safety through the implementation of the guidance here over the, over the impacts on access to neighboring residents. So the update proposed tonight is intended to better set expectations and to speed up the delivery. Next slide. So the proposed changes keep the same guidance on the amount of red curb and the same flexibility in its application, while really just folk changing and clarifying the process and how the city, city staff implements. It changes the language from guidelines with proposed requirements to being a council policy that details the application of intersection parking restrictions. It removes the prioritization criteria and commission review, placing implementation under the city engineer's municipal code authorization to restrict parking at hazardous areas. And it changes the public notification of a meeting to review the proposal to a public notice of the change before it is implemented. Again, this is intended to clarify that the policy is intended to be implemented citywide and to change the process to reflect that. Next slide, please. This change would allow for much quicker implementation of the safety measure, making it feasible for staff to incorporate into a broader range of projects, including roadway maintenance, such as pavement resurfacing and striping projects. And next slide. And with that, recommend, apologize for the old recommendation. The recommendation is that the city council approve the policy presented tonight for restricting street parking near intersections. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions from council?
Thanks for mentioning the, the bill. I mean, it's a little bit off perhaps, but I presume the professional judgment of staff is that ten feet on departure is, provides a safety benefit that is sufficient on balance. I'm just worried about the bill preventing parking within twenty feet on departure, given our short blocks in the east-west direction. So I'm curious what staff's thoughts are on that.
The guidance developed in twenty seventeen predates my time with the city, but the Transportation Commission did review those proposed changes and was comfortable with keeping the guidance that was developed in twenty seventeen. The slower speeds in our residential streets generally mean there is less distance required for stopping speed than on faster moving streets. The proposed bill doesn't do any distinguishing, it's a flat twenty feet with just, I think there was one amendment that changed it down to fifteen feet if there's a curb extension, but doesn't do any distinguishing. I think the developed in, what was developed in twenty seventeen was trying to really focus the visibility targeted as much as possible while capturing as much of the safety benefit as we could.
Thanks.
Justin, you mentioned that many projects come before the commission and that have all been approved. Do you have a rough number? Are we talking fifty, hundred? How many projects came through that were approved? Be rough, not an exact number.
I would say that we have taken probably four or five discussions to the commission in the last five years, just on red curb intersection treatments. Some of those have just been one or two locations. Most recently was maybe five or six. So it's, it's a small number. A lot larger implementation was, I think, in our repaving project, where the Washington reconstruction, we, we did that whole segment of Washington. And why we're interested in the council considering maintenance projects as well as it would just increase that.
Thank you.
Any further questions from council? None? Is there a public comment on this item? None, we'll bring it back to council for comments. Any comments from council?
I just have one comment. I'm curious, you know, we always talk about parking. How, how many parking spaces would you say that we would lose implementing this?
Sure. So again, the policy doesn't change the amount from what's the existing policy, but if we're saying there's none on a segment, if there's not, not even the drainage sort of few feet kind of thing, a full block would see a hundred and twenty feet between four approaches, four departures, sort of circling one block. It would depend on block lengths, but I can give you, if it's one of the typical smaller city blocks, say five hundred and eighty feet length, that would be seven point seven percent. If it was one of the larger length blocks, say a thousand foot block, that would be five percent. And again, that's just sort of a percentage of linear foot, that's not removing driveways that aren't a parking space before or after, or calculating the, where driveways do or don't allow. But that's the, the order of magnitude.
As I, I do know that I, I've heard from several people throughout town when the paving was getting done, like there were, there were several upset individuals, especially when it was happening right in front of their home, you know? And so I just want to be really cognizant of that. But it sounds like what this is really trying to do is it's really trying to change it to make the process easier for us to make the changes that need to happen a little bit more quickly to coincide with the rest of the paving and everything. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I'll, I'll just, to that point, the, the commission did spend some time discussing this. They were a little hesitant at first because they do hear a lot of the parking impact discussion. But one of the commissioners, when they were really thinking through it and thinking what would be a discussion in front of the commission that would have them vote different than the guidance, and the commission was sort of at a loss for what that would be. So they, they were initially hesitant to not have that venue for, for, for hearing those concerns, but they ended up concluding that, you know, if the safety was going to trump in these discussions when it's at the intersection each time, that they, they supported making that change to not give the idea that they were going to, to think otherwise potentially.
And I do know that, you know, like you had mentioned also, because we have much slower speeds and we've, we've really dialed things back throughout town. And especially now with the, the new speed bumps coming into play as well. And so I was, you know, that, that's that, how many feet do you need to like really see around stuff? And, you know, we have other obstacles that, you know, block certain intersections as well. So, I mean, I want to take eventually look at that stuff too. So these are just some things that I just want to throw out there and, and see what you guys think about it.
Justin, I, I appreciate the work that you've put into this. I appreciate the previous approach that was put forward in which it was guidelines. It gave us opportunities as a community to see what are the real world effects of the previous policy on a guideline basis. But having seen both through the repaving projects and the individual discussions across multiple intersections and understanding that our, the guidelines are essentially leading to a decision that was being almost unanimously always accepted, which was, we're going to prioritize pedestrians. In my work with communities across the country, when you see that you have a guideline or standard is consistently going to commission and consistently being approved and consistently, if ever taken to council, being reaffirmed, that should be a standard and set to a policy and allow staff and commissions to focus on other priorities of the community. That is not to say that there is not an impact on the community. But I will say that in general, this primarily impacts corner lots. Corner lots actually have the most street parking in front of their property compared to any other property within the city. And so while it is asking something of those properties, those properties tend to have the most access to on-street parking of all of our community. And that the safety benefits and the ability of making a decision on this now before we go into the active transportation plan will allow us to consider many more, many different solutions to help slow cars down, to help make our streets safer for all of our users. And so I commend all the work, Justin, that you put in and the commission has put in. And I'm very excited about the possibilities of enacting something like this across the community and freeing up our staff to focus on other things.
I couldn't put it better myself. Any further comments from council?
I'll just say too, just reiterate what John had said, you know, appreciate the work put in. But I also just state that anything that enhances safety for pedestrians and those with limited, limited mobility is something I'm always on board for, especially just given my own personal circumstances with my family, which is also actual experiences of vehicles not seeing us because they have obstruction at the, at the corners and us almost getting hit when I'm trying to stroll a baby in a stroller and my wife is trying to walk with a cane. And so, you know, knowing that there's, is opportunity or some way to at least make folks like that feel a bit safer, I think that makes a big difference, especially in a community like Albany, where it is a highly walkable community. And we want to keep encouraging that in our effort to reduce our carbon footprint and fight the climate crisis.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, for what's been put forward. I am concerned about AB four thirteen, but maybe I'll bring a letter back on that. But in the meantime, I see it's been referred to the Committee on Transportation in the Senate. It's already passed the assembly, so other council members concerned about its lack of nuance to context. They might contact our senator to let them know what their thinking is on that.
If there's no further comment, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
No, wait, a public comment?
Oh.
We already looked for it, didn't we?
There was none.
There was no public.
There wasn't when we looked.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You know, better to overcheck than under. Okay, there is a motion. Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you. It has been motioned and seconded. City clerk, can we please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Thank you very much. This brings us to item twelve, which is our council subcommittee and regional body reports. I'll start over there this time. Next, I'm going to bring a dice and I'm going to roll it. And then whoever's number comes up goes first. This time.
See, I attended the Stop Waste. We went through basically kind of a lot of the, the positions that, bills that are being talked about right now, and went through each one of them, talked about some changes and whether they were supporting them or not. There's a lot of interesting stuff going on. Not much, you know, again, I always, I do want to point out to everyone to continue to go on to the stopwaste.org website because there's lots of community engagement, information, activities. You know, there's things that are changing every day. And so, yeah, I would, I would go on there and take a look at some new bills that are, are being put forth. There's things like now that the artificial turf has been removed from one, they're not going to support it any longer. And, you know, a lot of different, very detailed things. So does, do any of you have any questions for me about any of, of that? No? So, but yeah, basically, we were just going through, covering every single item and what they were supporting and whatnot. And then we also reviewed the executive director. And that's it.
Thanks. So I attended the Alameda County Transportation Commission meeting, and there were a number of substantial actions. We approved the transportation expenditure plan for the next, well, actually, is it, I think it's the CIP. I'm getting my acronyms mixed up. But anyway, for the next five years, it makes an allocation for the first two years. The most controversy, to the extent there was controversy, which wasn't a lot by my estimation, but the only item that came in for question was awarding a grant to Berkeley to study rebuilding the, the pier in Berkeley with a ferry service, spreading it for ferry service. And there was some, there was some opposition to that from some stakeholders, but there was also a tremendous amount of support, so that went forward with that item included. So that went forward with that item included. We approved a contract with a construction firm to build Seventh Street East grid separation project. So this is one of the three main approaches to the Port of Oakland. The current underpass and the road tracks, I believe, is about a century old. It's incredibly substandard. The project was estimated by the engineer to be 202 million, if I recall correctly. It came in seven or eight percent below that, which is pretty great, great news, obviously. So that's a lot of money in absolute terms. So that will be starting up, starting up soon. It has the advantages of two lanes, better clearance, and will be reducing diesel particulate pollution considerably because it will eliminate a lot of the truck backups in that neighborhood, which is way overburdened with that type of pollution. And we also passed the budget for the agency for the next, next year.
Can we get a ferry terminal?
I tried. Not in this meeting, 15 years ago. So 15 years ago, there was, I think, an initial study that was done by what was then the Water Transit Authority, so emergency had not been added to its name. And it was, the momentum was for the ferry site. But at that time, my push was, you know, there's nobody that, well, there's very few people that live closer to the ferry than BART. So who's going to take ferry? And there's very few people that work closer to the ferry than, than BART. And so I successfully pushed for the initial study to consider an Alameda site. Interestingly, that study, when it came out, I think it was NIS, NIR, I don't remember, but when it came out, it found that the Berkeley ferry site was better because all the intersections, well, many of the intersections along University were already functioning what's called Level of Service F, and therefore this would have no impact. Whereas it would take the Buchanan, I mean, the Marin-San Pablo intersection to, I think, Level D from C, and therefore would have an impact, which my perspective was like, so you can't get to the ferry site because there's so much congestion, but it's already a mess, so it's okay. It was like, it just didn't make any sense in any way, shape, or form. But the momentum continued on in that direction. And now Berkeley's done a good job in building or planning for a tremendous amount of housing that has been built there. There's a huge biotech campus that's being built there. So I think there is demand closer to the ferry than to BART, unlike 15 years ago. But I like your thinking.
You know, F does mean fully functional. Fully utilized, so.
All right, thank you. I attended, there was an EBCE board meeting on the 17th. The big discussion there was around our budget. That was the preliminary discussion, so the full budget will come back in June. But as I think I said last time, as I, when I updated on the executive board's discussion of the budget, EBC's budget is very healthy and we are basically quibbling about how to best spend the surplus that EBC has to support customers and give rebates and whatnot. So it's all very good news. There was also an ABAG executive meeting where we discussed a couple of things, including approving the equity plan for the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority. We got a rundown from Bayren about their budget, which is overall about $140 million, and the vast majority of which becomes direct local assistance through a couple of different programs, all of which seemed great. And then there was some discussion of the state is currently considering or is sort of in the process of considering feedback on the regional housing needs assessment process. So they have a board that has been meeting over the past two months. Their last meeting, I think, was today, but you can still email if you have comments about it. And then they'll be making a presentation to the legislature on July, the start of July. So there was time to give feedback there about the RENA and this current housing element process a little bit, which was an interesting discussion. Yep.
If I could ask about that. So are they, is this discussion preparatory to the next eight-year cycle? Or the next allocation? Oh, wow, okay.
Eight years will go by like that.
Okay, thank you.
I attended the Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District meeting. We did approve our budget for the fiscal year. That felt like a huge sigh of relief. We also had a presentation, preliminary engineer's report for fiscal year 2023-24. Public hearing will be set for this upcoming meeting, which is on the 14th next week. Also, interestingly enough, on the administrative side, thought this is worth highlighting, there is, there was a proposal to change the bank that they use from Bank of the West to five-star banks solely for transfer purposes, partly because there's been concerns with fees and the owner has processed with updating signees with Bank of the West. So anyone out there in the public listening, maybe something to be aware of. But that does present its challenges when we are, when there are changes, pretty consistent changes in trustees for that governing body as well. For, from the financial reports, as of April 2023, there was a notable insurance rate increase, but that seemed pretty consistent across the country due to risk of increased claim. And interestingly enough, during monthly staff reports, when they were highlighting the assessment of calls and community needs and requests, many were for mosquito fish or concerns with standing water, but no calls whatsoever from the city of Albany. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. Perhaps I need to get out there and stand on the corner of Solano and let people know the phone number for the, the abatement district. But that pretty much summed up what we covered for that meeting. Unfortunately, for the previous advisory board meeting for the Giltrack Farm, I was not able to make it due to urgent medical situation for my son. However, still in the loop and in conversations with folks over there as we hash out time for our next meeting. Still trying to figure that one out.
No updates from me since our last council meeting.
Great. Any public comment on this item? Okay. I believe that brings us to item 13, which is future agenda items. I'll note the one we discussed earlier, the more full discussion of Music in the Park program for future years. Any other future agenda items from the council? None? Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, brings us to item number 14, our announcement of city meetings and events. I'll highlight that the Juneteenth event is coming up and also that on actual, Juneteenth event on Sunday, April 18th. But on the actual Juneteenth, the city offices will be closed, as that is a holiday. Otherwise, I ask everyone to take a look at our calendar of meetings. And that finally brings us to our adjournment. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, other city council members, city clerks, city manager, city attorney, staff, everyone who stuck with us through the whole meeting. And we are adjourned.